Good evening and welcome to the July meeting of the Addison Township Funding Commission. I'd like to start with the rule, uh, I'm sorry, to start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call please.
Chair, here. Vice Chair Jean Lourd.
Here.
Secretary Dins, here. Linda Garrett, here. Jean Malaya, here. Chuck Sargent.
Here.
Joe Schnerr, here.
Full board, thank you. Any announcements or correspondence from the board? Hearing none, we will go to the order of business. I need it to be approved.
Show moves.
Support. I have moved support that we proceed with the order of business as printed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all the peers say aye?
Aye.
All same side, we will proceed with the order of business as printed. Item number one, approval of the June 11, 2019, meeting minutes of this board.
I'll make the motion to approve as a result.
And second then?
I most instruct that the minutes be approved as printed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all the peers say aye?
Aye.
All same side, we'll continue. Item number two. Site plan review for storage facility. Brent Wazlowski, property owner. Parcel ID number 051410008. Zoning M1, light industrial. Approximately 5.64 acres. Would you like to speak first, Grant, or should we ask applicant to be to add anything to say?
I would welcome the applicant or his representative to make any presentation they wish to.
Do you have anything to say, sir?
I'll just make a short statement.
Aye.
So I'm Brett Wazlowski, the owner of the site and BNP Storage LLC. I spoke a little bit about myself in the main meeting, so I'll spare those details again. You can see the event, the plan has evolved a little bit since the main meeting. I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work that's gone into both the design and the reviews by Mr. Ian Bowman, Matt Hocking from PBA, and my engineer Jessica from Fenn and Associates. I'm very appreciative of all the feedback and knowledge put into this plan. One of the remaining items for discussion, probably here tonight, is the landscaping and screening plan. We've been at two plan, two options. One being a six-foot-tall chain link fence with privacy slats along the west and southern sides of the development. And this includes a few trees to break up the view of the fence from the road. And the second is the same fence, but with the privacy slats removed along the western roadside, and more trees, a little bit larger trees that are installed. And then the other item that I'd ask for possibly some more feedback and details from the commissioner of the township is what guidelines they can provide on the requirements of the surety, or the financial surety that they're looking for for the construction.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bowman?
A resolution has been prepared and given to the applicant, as well as the planning commissioners. I'd like to read that resolution. I believe it incorporates the reviews to date. Mr. Wazlowski has identified one, at least one remaining issue, and that is your preference for landscaping on the site. Your preference will be reflected in the minutes, and that preference will become a condition for any approval. Whereas the subject revised site plan and supplemental materials were received on June 25, 2019, processed according to the procedures that he had at the township funding commission. Whereas a public meeting July 9, 2019, has been publicly posted and held. Whereas the following findings were the result of a review of the public record, including the application and the standards for consideration of the site plan, as contained in Article 29 of the Addison Township zoning ordinance. Whereas the relevant criteria for approval of site plans as contained in Section 2905 of the Addison Township zoning ordinance have been met, to the satisfaction of the planning commission, the subject should satisfy the response to the conditions listed below. Whereas the applicant has been given an opportunity to respond to the foregoing findings. Now therefore be it resolved that the Addison Township Funding Commission does hereby recommend approval of the subject's site plan, based upon a review of the public record and the foregoing findings, and be it furthermore resolved that the recommended approval shall be subject to, namely, a response to each condition must be acceptable to the township for the following conditions. Number one, acceptance of financial surety, project completion schedule, maintenance agreement, and project estimate, and by Addison Township Board following legal counsel review, compliance with any outstanding engineering concerns as listed in the latest Township Engineers Report. We each have a copy of that dated July 1, 2019. Number three, compliance with requirements of Addison Township Fire Department, and compliance with any other conditions or recommended site plan modifications contained in the minutes of the July 9, 2019 Addison Township Planning Commission meeting. Number four, required that tenants must sign an agreement, as reviewed and recommended by township's legal counsel, to maintain no flammable liquids or hazardous materials on the site. Number five, no outdoor storage permitted on-site, including parking of vehicles overnight. And six, no advertising on the site, or sales of goods or services on the site. We have room for more conditions, should you wish to add any beyond discussions of landscape plan. Having heard the resolution, I'd ask the applicant if they have any response to the conditions?
No.
Hearing none, be open to the township's end or questions of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Committing to your board, if you care to speak or ask questions, you're welcome to raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. I wondered, that site is a large site, and you're only using a small portion in the front. Do you have any plans for developing the rear of the site?
There's not plans to develop the rear of the site. Oh, and there's no plans to develop the rear of the site. A lot of the rear of the site is what it, I think the far, far back of the site is what lands, so now we have plans-
So you're just gonna leave it that way?
To develop the rear of the site.
Okay. What else? That's all I have for questions, thank you.
How about board members?
As far as the fencing is concerned, do we need to have screening that has the slats in it? Is that a requirement?
The screening needs to be, what is in your judgment, opaque.
So we could have maybe a vinyl coated chain link fence with trees in front of it, would that suffice?
If the trees provide an adequate visual barrier, that could be the case. The trees, as shown, are inadequate visual barrier. There need to be more trees, they need to be staggered, offset, as you see in the second site plan review tonight.
Would that be option number two you're referring to?
Well, it's, uh-
Option two.
Option two does not show staggered plantings, it's merely, merely a row.
Correct, with additional plantings, which were actually relocated from west of the building.
So we don't need to choose between the options. You can specify whatever you believe meets the intensity ordinance.
I think it might be hard to put trees on the south side, but on the street side, you know. I'm just not a fan of slatted privacy fences. I mean, chain link fences with slats in them. So I wondered if there was any other options that would work? Isn't that the ordinance?
A fence of your preference, or a wall, or a 20-foot berm are the options available under the ordinance. Evergreens, if used, need to be planted at 20-foot intervals, which have a minimum height of eight feet. Alternating rows with a minimum of two rows.
So that's why we have the slatted fence?
That, I believe, is the applicant's intent to provide an opaque visual screen to the west.
So I have a, not a very good picture of what these look like. I mean, are these colored fence slats, or?
Yeah, the document I provided was colored, apparently didn't pronounce them color. So there are a few different options, black, green, a taupe, much like the wall behind you. So there are a few different options. Yeah, I think in the plan, we also have a few trees shown in front of it, just to break it up, so it's not, you know, just a solid, I'll say ugly fence or ugly wall. I'll try and break it up with a couple of trees in front of it.
Can you read, what? Foliage.
Sounds lovely.
I asked about green, or foliage color.
Those are definitely options.
Could do camel, I'm just kidding. I guess I'm just not a big fan of those. I like more trees.
And boat.
You do have the option, but we're looking for something called an effective barrier to vision.
Somebody have option number two, the trend form of landscape? Option number two. Which depicts eight-foot evergreens, spaced no more than 20 feet. Mr. Ian suggested alternating rows, staggered planting. Perhaps the addition of three additional trees to each of the open spaces of the four depicted on option two would suffice.
All right, two rows, you would end up with trees every 10 feet, but staggered, does that fit?
Yes, yes.
Would that fit within where that drainage swale is?
Here, here.
Oh, on the other side, okay.
Right. The swale would be down between the two, with setback from Rochester Road sufficient, and it appears to be so.
So there's nothing behind it?
Fifty trees in a ditch. So you would have staggered, staggered, and then a fencing?
Here.
Fifty trees off.
And addressing the south?
It's like the south shows fencing. Now there is one.
Okay.
I think the initial landscape plan shows three plantings to the south. I want to see a date, I'm guessing, but you could see three plantings south of the smaller structure.
Can I see that? So you're thinking of eliminating the fencing along the front and doing staggered trees?
No, boat. Staggered trees in front of the fencing.
Doesn't say stagger.
That's what I'm suggesting. If you see the swale line?
There's a swale, yeah. But there's nothing back here, just a fence. So you almost made that fencing for a gate in the front anyway, for security? Yeah, they have their security in here.
Is there proposed fencing in all four sides?
No, just the two sides shown.
Oh, two sides?
Yes.
West and south?
Yes.
The north side has a strong pine tree presence already.
Yeah.
Oh, and we're gonna wear it up.
The rear is wood, by the drain.
So, a proposal of putting pine trees every 10 feet, or staggering them on either side of the swale, is what Chuck is suggesting, am I understanding that?
Yes, and they don't necessarily have to be staggered 10 feet, but still maintain 20 feet. Because you have two separate periods.
A green slatted privacy fence along the west side, and then-
South side.
The south side, a green slatted privacy chain link.
I just wanted, Jessica, I'm an associate engineer. I just wanted to bring up that the trees out there would actually be within the right-of-way of the road?
The 60 feet?
Yes, they would actually be within the right-of-way. I'm not sure if that's gonna be an issue or not. I did just wanna bring it up so you guys were aware.
Well, aren't the trees that are proposed now in the right-of-way?
Yes.
So the road commission would have to approve those plantings? What about a wood privacy fence? Doesn't last as long, you have to maintain them.
We do also provide for something called an alternate grouping of plant materials with equivalent screening effect. So we've only talked about evergreen trees, but there is an option for something other than evergreen trees.
And that would be?
Something that you would need to come up with in your imagination.
Well, everybody uses deer candy, so those are neither. So we're kinda stuck on that one, then?
So typically, we're thinking of a spruce for this kind of setting. Evergreen would not be an adequate descriptor, you'd need to come up with something more specific.
Yes, specific stuff, definitely. Now, so how much space is there really between where the fence property line is proposed to the drainage swale?
Probably about 10 feet on the south side of the entrance drive. And then, I don't know about the same on the north, so you hit the center line.
Might be difficult to fit a berm in there, even the trees are kinda-
Trees are iffy if you go with spruce in 10 years.
Yeah, they're gonna be huge.
They're gonna be out to the edge of either right-of-way area.
Well, I would like to suggest a more, I don't know, maybe a wooden privacy fence would maybe look better than the chain link with the green in it.
Do you have that option, if that is your preference?
As a counter suggestion, just because it will have a gate, and I know gates generally don't hold up well with wood. I would suggest that we could either do chain link with or without the slats, and increase the tree count to the eight that's shown on option two, so we can do a combination of beige-colored slat and maybe eight plantings as shown on option two. So you get, you do get the opaque fence, although it's not super pretty. It will be much more durable than a wooden fence, and would have the option to still have a fairly robust gate, and also have a good amount of trees in front of it to block the view of that fence.
What about a six-foot vinyl privacy fence? They're kinda decorative.
Yeah, I don't know if vinyl would really hold up, and, you know, for a secure, from a security standpoint, as well as from a gate standpoint either. Too tough to think of.
Like, they always have steel bollards in there with the gate, so I don't think that, I think that could be resolved. I'm concerned about the trees not having enough space there, being in the right-of-way, in the drainage swale, getting approval from the road commission, or making that a requirement. And we don't even have, you know, the county's gonna be like, well, you know, you're right in the right-of-way, and you're putting out something that could be obstructive. Those get big, you've got a driveway, people trying to pull out of there with bolts or trailers or something. I mean, that could be a site obstructing issue. So, I'm just trying to think of other options.
Yeah, we would certainly keep them trimmed and maintained, and back away from the road and the driveway there.
Is there a possibility of putting the trees between the building and the retention pump, or detention pump? No?
No, that's a, that's a, I don't think there actually is in the right-of-way.
Let's put it in paraphrasing. If the board can verbally agree, make it a part of the motion, if we verbally agree.
I like the chain link fence with the privacy slats. It'll last longer, more durable, if somebody hits it going in and out. The vinyl is very crackable. I know my friend has picket fence with all the vinyl, and it's had several disasters that had to be repaired.
I think there's a lot of fencing options out there.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything else, so.
There's precast aggregate, precast aggregate? You see along the highways, they bring in the precast, put them with H-beams? That cover various heights.
Yeah, I've seen a farmer use that on a field.
So that's basically a wall?
It's basically a wall, it is a wall.
No, I've seen fencing that look like stone, or, you know, different patterns. There's definitely a lot of residential applications that I've seen. I just don't know how it would work in a commercial setting, if it would be durable, I don't know. They seem to have pretty long warranties. Are you guys pretty solid that you want to do the chain link with the slats and the trees? That's what you're comfortable with?
I believe so, yes.
You think the road commission would approve those trees in the right-of-way?
Way far down.
All right, so which, with the four trees on either side, so eight trees, spruce trees, or similar type evergreen? With the west side, chain link fence with green slats? And then the south side, I guess, just six-foot high with green slats? I can't see putting anything else in there that's not gonna, not gonna be able to grow.
Okay, with that, could inform to our ordinance, Mr. Bowman?
May I have a repeat of that? Spruce over approval equivalent?
Yes, spaced no more than 20 feet in the right-of-way. With approval from the road commission, if not, then we'd have to look at other options. And then the six-foot privacy chain link with green slats.
On the south?
On the south, and the-
West.
Unless you think those four trees would be okay, I need to say?
Four trees would be inadequate to provide the visual screening, we must have the slats. I think-
Green slats?
Slats, your choice of color. I think Brett's suggesting that the trees break up what some might consider a monotonous visual pattern.
Hard to see.
But it is a, it is, it goes beyond the requirement of the ordinance. But I think it is a, an attractive option to leaving it bare. So, because we have the slats, a color yet to be determined, we do not need the staggered planting, the single row would be for aesthetic purposes rather than the visual barrier. And on the south, we have the slatted chain link fence.
So we don't need the slats on the west side?
We do need slats on both sides. We don't need the trees on the west side, but they are being added, and we're accepting that as a visual aesthetic improvement to what otherwise would be a barren.
Well, you're showing four trees with the fence on each side.
Correct.
Is that what we all would like to see, or?
There's option two.
There's option two. It is option two, what we're discussing, exactly.
I have no problem with that, but single, single trees, I mean-
Single trees.
The staggered, double trees, you're like, once again, it's gonna be in the right-of-way.
This is a single row, and it goes beyond our minimum requirement. So we're grateful for the aesthetic improvement. And we're including that as a condition in a motion that's about to be offered.
Okay, and we-
Good question, I mean.
Chair? Sir, go ahead.
That would not require the road commission.
The plantings will still require road commission approval, I believe, those are still-
On the west side?
Still. And if the road commission fails to do that, you'll need to act to remove that condition, or come up with an alternate planting that is acceptable, if there are any, to the road commission. There could be a variety of bushes or something that may have less of an intrusive impact for- So, we're not trying to be, we're not trying to be, try to hinder the progress of this.
I'm still concerned that those two trees could block vision coming in and out of that driveway.
Well, should that happen, ordinance prevents trimming from the ground up.
I don't think so, I think they're set back far enough if you're coming out.
Mr. Chuck?
Yes, sir. Would it be feasible to possibly table this, and have the owner bring back something that is approved by the road commission, that we can take a look at, rather than him putting something in there, or us putting something in there that gets disapproved, and then we have to remove it? Would be, would it be better to just table it, and have him bring back something that's acceptable to him, that's approved by the road commission? Or is that, I mean, I don't wanna, I think everybody knows how I feel about opening things up, so. And I don't wanna do that. But I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's right for us to go ahead and say, hey, you should do this, you should do that, and then have to take it back out again.
Well, regrettably, no one knows what the landscaping needs to be until the planning commission decides. If you want to consider those plantings as optional, subject to road commission approval, then if the road commission doesn't approve, then he proceeds without the trees. And the township board has an opportunity to consider the matter when it gets its hand on the site plan. And by that time, perhaps the applicant will come up with something acceptable to the road commission. I'm reluctant to table, because, again, if the applicant knew what he wanted ahead of time, he would have provided. But our procedures are such that we don't know until we convene what our preferences are.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Is it possible that the road commission would say no to those trees, but they might say okay to shrubbery?
But man, you're confusing me with shrubbery. Shrubbery is short, and a car is short, and you're blocking the vision at that point also.
Against the fence, you could put spyryal or different bushes that could be six feet tall. That aren't gonna, the trees need, if the tree gets to help, it can a spruce tree get. I mean, they could be 15 feet diameter, or if you-
In diameter?
Oh, easy, yeah.
Not in diameter, well.
The spread. The spread, right, so you've got a, you're in ten feet away from the fence, and then it's gonna go further out. They might have concerns with that, just from obstruction. If you were to put in, like I said, spyryal comes to mind, maybe that's not the only option, but that could be against that fence, and not, not go towards the road, or have a height.
I think it's clear to the applicant that the planning commission would like some kind of planting treatment on the west side of the fence. He is proposing this, we'll see what the road commission has to say. But it's incumbent upon him to try to work with the road commission, come up with something acceptable to them, if not, the spruce trees. But I'm trying to avoid the necessity of the applicant coming back to us prior to him going to the township board. The township board has the discretion to recommend a modification of the site plan. Hopefully by that time, something has come forward, and I suspect, I suspect the applicant- Hopefully, by that time, something has come forward, and I suspect, I suspect the applicant will walk into the road commission with some option in his pocket or a willingness to accept their suggestion.
So a final decision on that could come back to the township board if we were to recommend approval, subject to road commission approval?
It sounds that way, yes, ma'am. I do believe so.
So I see a motion then that spruce or an approval equivalent of tree plantings as shown on option two, 20-foot spacing, single row, the road commission approval, chain link fence with slating of a color to be determined in the next few moments on the west and south as shown on that plan two. That motion needs to be shown on the actual site plan as well, so that will be a modification of the site plan. And that slat color was?
Green.
Green.
A forest green or a...
Forest.
I'm pretty sure it's green, that's a nice green.
Okay, a dark green. There we go. Okay, is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
That's being added as item number seven to your resolution.
Do we need a separate motion to add that, add item number seven, or just a handshake and then put it in there?
Let's, let's take a vote on it, given the sensitive nature of this.
A roll call vote? All right, we have a motion and a second discussion, and then roll call vote on what you just heard Mr. Bowman say.
So, do you want me to do the roll call right now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Lawrence Smith?
Yes.
Gene Lillard?
Yes.
Secretary Benz, yes. Linda Garrett?
Yes.
Jean Malaya?
Yes.
Chuck Sargent?
Yes.
Joe Schner?
Yes. Motion carried.
With that, we now have the resolution before you, including this item seven, looking for a motion to adopt the resolution. As I said...
Well, I thought, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I just made a mistake.
I thought we were going to talk about the lighting plan requirements or photometric plans, anything?
That is a condition that is in the July first letter, but discussion is certainly welcome once the motion is made and there's support. That could be part of the discussion as to whether to add, add that.
So are you moving on the resolution now, sir?
Yes.
Okay, you may go ahead. You so moved?
So moved.
I'll second.
You so second? I have motion and a second on the printed resolution in front of us. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, I was hoping to see a photometric lighting plan with some lighting details and would like to see shielding on that. So I know the village of Leonard has a dark skies ordinance and would like to maybe follow with that.
I thought it was.
Is that, that type of lighting not included in the site plan?
We have a, a graphic, a photographic representation of what lights would look like. What the engineer has required is that the detail that the commissioner is looking for be presented to the building inspector to verify that our ordinance requirements are met, mainly that there's shielding so that the lighting, if you will, stays on the premises and is not visible. We have the benefit that these, where the lighting is proposed and it needs to be shown on the site plan as represented by the engineer, the buildings are facing one another, so to the north and the south, there will be no lighting. The buildings are facing one another, so it should minimize any impact of lighting beyond...
It seemed to, but I wasn't sure what's going to be glowing out there in the middle.
My concern would be exactly across the street, looking through the gate. So that's why the engineers required that detail on the site plan, to verify the ordinance requirement has been met.
So her concern is met in the site plan?
Once it's added to the site plan, I believe it'd be met or cited as a deficiency.
So it needs to be added?
Yes.
So would we add it just like we did with another motion?
You did so when you accepted number, item number two, compliance with outstanding engineering concerns.
So Linda's concerns are already met?
Well, it's listed in the July 1, 2019 letter. However, it's not yet been met. That's why it's a condition in his letter.
Why don't we take care of that right now or add another, after this is taken care of?
After this meeting, it needs to be done before the matter will be referred to the township board. All conditions must be met before it's scheduled for township board.
Is that okay if we proceed, Linda?
Well, I thought I read this. It says recommended lighting plan details be included. It's a recommendation, and it may also require the inclusion. So it's, see, I just read it, it was optional. I didn't realize that it was covered in that.
The option that we have is to defer to the engineer and the building inspector for verification of ordinance or...
Fine.
Or add it. That's a special condition.
So are you satisfied, Linda?
If Ryan's good, I'm good.
Okay. All right, that, and any further discussion or questions, et cetera? I have motion and a second. It is this piece of paper that we all have for that discussion, so we're ready to vote. Yes means that we adopt this planning commission resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Lawrence Smith?
Yes.
Gene Lillard?
Yes.
Secretary Benz, yes. Linda Garrett?
Yes.
Jean Malaya?
Yes.
Chuck Sargent?
Yes.
Joe Schner?
Yes.
All yes.
The resolution passes.
Among outstanding matter, we got listed as Brett and Brent. Do you have a preference?
Brett, I don't think that there's an N in any of the paperwork that I've turned in.
The road commissioner refers to as Brent.
Yeah, that was a typo. I double-checked my application, they made a typo. My application was correct. They did double the T though, so...
The township, to make up for it. The township attorney will let you know of any preference the township may have on the nature of the financial surety. That's the question you asked, we did not respond to it. Is that an adequate statement, recording, secretary?
Typically, something is submitted for him to review.
Yeah, you can submit something and see if that works, but if we have a preference, I would pass it, we let you know, so you don't unnecessarily spin your wheel. We, I'm unaware of a preference.
We will proceed with item number three. Site plan review, Lakeville Animal Clinic expansion. Dr. Patrick Lynn. Carso dress 3,500 Lakeville Road, Oxford Mission, 48370. Carso number 0519376007. Carso size? Apparently, it had no size. Estimated two acres. Zoning agriculture? Eighty. New item, Mr. Bowman?
As before, we have a resolution based upon the reviews to date. A copy is forthcoming for the applicant even as I speak. I'm grateful that the clinic has chosen to expand here in the township. I'm grateful for their forbearance as they've had to endure multiple visits to the zoning ward appeals over time, which may have delayed their progress to date. But it appears that the reviews are complete. The resolution is as follows. Whereas the subject revised site plan received on June 14, 2019, processed according to the procedures of the Addison Township Planning Commission, whereas a public meeting, July 9, 2019, had been publicly posted and held, whereas the following findings were the result of review of the public record, including the application standards for consideration of a site plan, as contained in Article 29 of the Addison Township's own ordinance. Whereas the relevant criteria for approval of site plans is contained in the Addison Township ordinance, Section 2005, have been met or have variances to the satisfaction of the planning commission, subject to satisfactory response of the conditions listed below. Whereas the applicant is given an opportunity to respond to foregoing findings, now therefore be resolved that Addison Township Planning Commission does hereby recommend approval to the Addison Township Board of the subject site plan, based upon a review of the public record and the foregoing findings, and to be furthermore resolved that the recommended approval shall be subject to, namely, a response. Each condition must be satisfactory to Addison Township, the following conditions. Number one, acceptance of financial surety and project cost estimate, completion scheduled by the Addison Township Board following leave council review. And two, compliance with any outstanding engineering concerns as listed, including A, provide a cross-section detail and profile of the stormwater management system, B, minor engineering comments, C, the June 26, 2019 PEA project letter AD 19001. Number three, compliance with the requirements of Addison Township Department. Number four, any other condition or recommended site plan modification, as contained in the minutes of this evening's meeting.
Thank you, sir.
As before, I welcome any presentation by the applicant or the applicant's representative, be followed by questions from the planning commission.
Do you have comments, doctor, or your representative?
I don't need them, I have nothing to really add. I have the same drawing, I just...
Could you come in front of us so it's a little more visible? Thank you.
So nothing, Nathan Robinson, Horizon Engineering, the engineer on the project.
Can't quite hear you.
No, sure, no problem. Nathan Robinson with Horizon Engineering, I'm the engineer on the project, did the site plan. I have nothing more to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if this helps at all. Do I have drawings mounted, the same drawing that's in front of you, it's just nothing color to it. Aside from that, the conditions that were in the, or comments from the engineer, just to kind of expand on that. So this project does include a small stormwater detention basin, so it's been designed in accordance with the engineer's comments and according to local county water resource commission's requirements. He just wants more detail, so just a cross-section. This is a plan view of what's proposed. He's just asking for a cross-section to just show it in profile, how that's going to be graded. In addition to that, the minor engineering comments are very minor. He wants to see some additional proposed grades on the subject field, just to demonstrate that it's not just a flat plateau, that it will be crowned in the center, so the drainage will sheet off in either direction. And there's, we've got arrows on the drawing indicating the direction that drainage is flowing. One of the arrows needs to be flipped, because I've got it pointing in the wrong direction. So very minor comments, so those are no problem. Those will be addressed prior to being reviewed in the board.
Thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions from here?
Who's that?
For the floor here. Very note, thank you, sir. Any more comments, Mr. Bowman?
You'll note the staggered plantings and the detail on the site plan of how those trees will be planted. Very much appreciate that level of detail on the site plan.
I thought the site plan was great, and then I would move this motion forward.
I'll support it.
I have motion support on the resolution printed in front of us. Is there any further discussion? And then I'd like a roll call vote on the resolution.
Okay, Chair Lawrence Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gene Lillard?
Yes.
Secretary Benz, yes. Linda Garrett?
Yes.
Jean Malaya?
Yes.
Chuck Sargent?
Yes.
Joe Schner?
The resolution passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your presidency, Nathan.
You know, I'll make a further comment on Dr. Lynn. He has been before the DBA quite a few times, and you've been very cooperative, and thank you.
It's been fun and learning experience.
It's kind of fun, hasn't it? I agree.
It was, actually.
It was, I agree.
I really enjoyed it.
He had his ducks in a row, and that makes a difference, and it was, it's been a very good experience. I agree. Yep, thank you. Okay, public forum. You two gentlemen have the floor, along with Pauline Bennett. Apparently, you're not going to speak. Commissioners' reports. Anybody on the board here have anything to report of interest to all concerned? DBA is up to date, but nothing really exciting going on. And the next item is... A motion?
I move your adjourn.
And I have two motions that we adjourn. I need a second.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second that we adjourn.
Oh, I didn't hear the first one.
Any discussion? Turn down all the perps, the eye?
All right.
Both same side? Thank you. 6:45.